I'm going to give it about another 30 seconds just to wait for any last minute arrivals. I picked a fine time to get an itch in my throat. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting of the August 25th City Council to order. Time is now 7:30 and I have let in the last individual in the waiting room. So at this time, I'd like you to remain muted, but join me in the pledge of allegiance. So with that, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Vassassi.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Sunaka.
Here.
With seven present and none absent, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped and recorded on the Zoom conference line. It will be available for future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Just a quick reminder, public comment will be afforded to the member of the public who are joining us on this conference line. They will be provided that opportunity so long as they've given their contact credentials and the subject matter for which they wanted to speak about before the deadline, which was noted on this evening's agenda. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers listening to this meeting will also be afforded that opportunity if they've arrived and signed in before the start of the meeting. As always, any written comments that were submitted prior to this meeting will also be read aloud. Now, having said that, I think we'll just jump right into the first order of business, which is to approve minutes from previous meetings. There are three sets of meetings to approve or meeting minutes rather to approve. The first one is the July 21st, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. With that, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Please show your hands if any. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes from July 21st Committee of the Whole are approved. This brings us to the July 28th, 2020 City Council meeting. Is there a motion by show of hand to approve these minutes? Thank you, Alderman Vassassi. Thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. With this set of minutes, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. Moving forward to August 11th, 2020 City Council meeting, is there a motion to approve these minutes by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. With this set of minutes from the City Council meeting on August 11th, are there any corrections, additions, or deletion? Seeing none, the question is, shall those minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Yes. Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. Moving on now, I do not have any reason to deviate from this evening's meeting. So that brings us to the mayor's report. I just wanted to mention this past Saturday's city market seemed to appear as though we had many more vendors than the prior city market. And I think that's a good thing. I was pleased to see that. I like to see the flow that we've been augmenting to in these times. And then the other item I have quickly, and it's a nonpartisan item, but the League of Women Voters has reached out to the mayors locally here as well as the local chambers of commerce. And they're asking them to promote the upcoming elections. This again is a nonpartisan plea encouraging residents to participate in their civic and democratic duty to vote. And their slogan is, it's your voice, your vote, and your choice matters. With that, are there any ward reports this evening by show of hand? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a real quick one. I do want to extend some thanks from the residents here in the third ward. Great collaboration with the Park District. That was actually a meeting I just ran from tonight. They did a community resident feedback meeting for the renovated Cardinal Drive Park that's coming up for spring of 2021. So just wanted to pass on. Now, there was a couple of residents there. Always would have been great to see more as we always like to see as many residents involved as we can. But it was a great presentation from the Park District and a couple of residents did ask me to pass on their thanks. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Cannon, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know. Three of us last Thursday, including Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Diastis, and myself represented the city at the grand opening of Meadow Square. I&amp;M Homes had a nice open house. They also announced to us that 23 units are sold already, so they're making nice progress on it, and it should be a win-win for the community. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. It's nice that you attended that for MI Homes. Any other ward reports this evening? Seeing none, now would be the time that we open the floor for public comment for the next 20 minutes. But I've been informed that we have not received any signatures submitted before the deadline, nor do we have anybody physically present in city council chambers to speak. So that will bring us on to the next order of business, which are pending items. First, one-line item A, ordinance number 20-36, which is to amend Appendix B entitled Schedule of Rates, Fees, Fines, and Penalties of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolling Meadows Regarding Building and Construction Fees. By show of hand, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts, and thank you for the second, Alderman Sunaka. Is there any discussion on this item by show of hand? Alderman Bud Matts, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the work that the community development put into the chart that they provided us, which compares the rates for various permits to different municipalities, both close by and then of similar size. It was really appreciated and it gives me the freedom to vote for this with ease. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Any further discussion from any other member of the council this evening on this item? Seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Moving on to the consent ordinances, as I mentioned, this next item is the consent ordinances in for first reading. It consists of two items, Items B and C. And I am going to be pulling Item B as staff is requesting a waiver of the first reading. And since there is only one item left, I will just read these individually. Now, as I mentioned, staff is asking for a waiver of the first reading for Item E so that this ordinance can be approved immediately. And with that, I need an Alderman willing to make the motion to waive the first reading of this ordinance. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sunaka for the first. Thank you, Alderman Vassassi for the second. This ordinance number 20-37 is to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there any discussion on the motion to waive the first reading? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for final approval? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward. So circling back for final approval, ordinance number 20-37 approving an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Sunaka for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. So now, this brings us to Item C, ordinance number 20-00, approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Thank you, Alderman Sunaka for the first, and thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance move forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for a second reading. The next item on the agenda, line item D, is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for August 25th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman Sunaka for the first, and thank you for the second, Alderman Cannon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Mayor, I had a question. You missed my hand.
Sorry about that, Alderman Cannon. Go ahead.
Right. Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor. I had a resident call me this week, or not this week, yesterday because he looked at the agenda and saw the bills. And the question come up is, why are we paying Mad Bomber $8,000 even though we didn't do any fireworks this year? I didn't know the answer to that question.
Sure. Manager Crumstock, can you articulate on that and what the arrangement is for the following year or National Night Out?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, when 4th of July came, we asked and requested a move to National Night Out. Then when we canceled National Night Out, we had another discussion with the provider, Mad Bomber. And actually, they still wanted some payment, but what we're paying now is going to be utilized in 2021. So this will go to advance for 2021 fireworks. They've been our lowest responsible bidder for over 25 years, so we feel very comfortable. And it's a good thing that we're doing paying with some money now because, again, we're working on the 2021 budget and it does have some concerns. So this is an advance payment continuing with the relationship that we had.
Thanks for the answer.
Anything further, Alderman Cannon?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So then moving back to the roll call, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This now brings us on to the consent resolutions. It consists of five items, Items E through I. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolution by show of hand? Any items to be pulled this evening? Seeing none, the chair declares it, in order for one motion to consider the five resolutions in one motion without debate, is there such a motion by show of hand? Thank you, Alderman Sunaka, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. So, beginning with line item E, Resolution Number 20-R-81 is to approve intergovernmental and subrecipient agreement for Coronavirus Relief Fund of the CARES Act. Next, one-line item F, Resolution Number 20-R-82 is to award a contract for fire hydrant painting. Line item G, Resolution Number 20-R-83 is to award professional design engineering services contract related to the proposed water main improvements on Ann Arbor Drive Phase 3. Line item H, Resolution Number 20-R-84 is to authorize signature on a plat of easement at 3604 Sigwall for drainage related to the 2809 owl improvements. Lastly, line item I, Resolution Number 20-R-85, it's to award a contract for Phase 2 of the Public Works Parking Lot Improvement Project. The question is, shall the five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Vassassi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sunaka.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. As we move on past the consent resolutions and on to other business and reports for this evening, there are no appointments to be made tonight as well as proclamations. Does the city clerk have anything to report?
Not tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. Then that'll bring us to city staff reports. And the first item up on the city staff reports are the community items of interest. Manager Crumstock, I hand the floor to you. Manager Crumstock, do we still have you on the line?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And obviously, we want to thank everybody who donated blood at the Thursday, June 25th Blood Drive. We do have another one scheduled here at City Hall, scheduled for this Thursday, August 27th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And again, that is in the council chambers. Due to need for social distancing, appointments are really needed for this event. And contact Vitalant at 877-258-4825. Wearing a face covering mask is required. Walk-ins will only be accommodated if no scheduled appointments are present in the council chambers. Obviously, Vitalant will also be conducting COVID-19 antibody testing for all those individuals who complete the donation process during this blood drive. And again, that is this Thursday, August 27th, between 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. As Mayor mentioned earlier, we do thank everybody who attended the Saturday, August 22nd City Market. The next one is scheduled for Saturday, September 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, at the Community Church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. Scheduled for this market is the Rolling Meadows Marching Band for a period of time. They will hopefully be joining the market for this event. And again, we're still hoping that they continue doing it. Might be their first event out as the marching band this year. And again, face coverings, one-way travel distance, and social distancing are all part of this event. And obviously, we do appreciate the council members and the mayor who've been at the event at the 10th. And actually, when we discuss for 2021, we're going to talk about potentially changing that hour when you're actually in there. And we do appreciate Alderman Bud Matts, Alderman O'Brien, and Mayor Gallo for being at the last one. City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Monday, September 7th, in observance of Labor Day. There will be no refuse collection on Monday. Refuse collection will be delayed one day for the entire week. We do wish everybody is safe and happy Labor Day weekend. Obviously, as we've been doing throughout this census period of time, and you have one more month for hear from me where our numbers are coming from. But we do want to take a time, just a few minutes, to say thank you to everybody who's responded. Everybody should be asking their neighbors, their friends, their family, have you conducted with this? But for the City of Rolling Meadows, our response rate is at 78.6. It is outpacing the overall state response, which is at 69%. And Cook County is at 64.5%. All those numbers were from August 19th. Regarding the census, everybody wins. Please reply. And again, it is necessary for additional items that are used, not just for funding, but relocation or representation back to Congress and actually, as we work on the wards in 2021. There are census trackers out there. They do visit homes if you have not completed or just to confirm what information you have given to them in the past. Please respond today. And again, field data collection will end on September 30th. We do want to mention again, the second installment, Cook County Property Taxes, were due earlier. But thanks to Cook County, you have until October 1st to pay without a late charge. And again, we do want to reiterate to people that it is due before October 1st without any late charges. So that's really the last day for that. We do want to mention that the Rolling Meadows Police Department is participating in a Labor Day Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over campaign. This will run until the early morning hours of September 8th. This participation with the State of Illinois Police is made possible by Federal Highway Safety Fund administered by the Illinois Department of Transportation. Motorists in Rolling Meadows can expect to see stepped-up impaired driving patrols and seatbelt enforcement, particularly at night. We do want to mention that, as we've done for a little bit, a mailing was distributed throughout the community that requires all water customers, residents, and businesses to participate in the city's Cross Connection Control Survey. This online survey is required by the IEPA every two years for all public water supplies. If you have not seen one or you misplaced one and you need to do one, the online survey portal can be found at wwwblackflow.com/rollingmeadows. We do want to mention that the city does have some Census 2020 masks in supply. You can always come here at City Hall. We do have them out at the counters too, and this is as supplies last. And as I mentioned earlier, the census takers are out there. You can identify them by their U.S. government IDs and their Census 2020 bags. And again, they're only really stopping to confirm information or if you have not completed. We do want to mention another friendly reminder for residents and businesses. If you're having a hard time paying your utility bill or food and beverage payments, please contact Finance at 847-394-8500 or email at finance@cityrm.org, and we'll be able to place you on a payment plan. It's still August. It's one of our months that we do the eNews and Views. This is the companion to the News and Views. If you've not seen it, please visit cityrm.org and click on the News and Views tab, and you can see this eNews and Views for August. Obviously, we want to mention that police shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows is important more than ever to help our businesses. During these times, it's significant to remember our big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses. Regarding the next one, I do have some additional information that I would like to add. But on Thursday, September 24th, beginning at 7:30 p.m. at City Hall Council Chambers, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be conducting a public hearing on recommended revisions to the Rolling Meadow zoning code. Copies of the revised draft code will be available at www.citirm.org or at the Community Development Division at City Hall during normal hours. That's 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Residents or businesses who have questions about the proposed zoning code update are welcome to contact Community Development Division Planning Assistant, Elizabeth Payne at 847-870-9033, or paine@citirm.org. The item that I want to add to this one is, Community Development Staff is also finalizing plans to complete the comprehensive zoning ordinance rewrite. As council may recall, this is one of the major recommendations that came out of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Update, especially how old our zoning code was. The Planning and Zoning Commission got a sneak peek at this new draft code at their last meeting and during the workshop session held with the city's consultant from Tuscan Associates. The public hearing for this comprehensive text amendment is scheduled, again, for Thursday, September 24th, in the council chambers, beginning at 7:30 p.m. One of the major changes, and again, people should be aware of this, that has been considered, is the elimination of the existing Transitional or T zoning district and the reclassification of the properties to a Commercial C zoning district. As this technical constitutes a rezoning of several properties within the community, individual notice letters are going out to each owner impacted by the property and proposed action. A copy of the actual letter will be provided in the Friday report that is sent out to the city council and press. At this time, staff is requesting that anyone who receives the letter and has questions, direct them to Elizabeth Payne at the Community Development Department. Again, her telephone number is 847-870-9033. Obviously, the other item that is on the list before I add one more is that we do list our future topics for September committee of the meetings. They are on actually Tuesday, September 1st. The first one is the Economic Development Committee, and again, Tuesday, September 1st, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers. We will finally have the nomination, election over chairman, business list, feedback, and distribution of a new list and contacts. Meet Chicago Northwest will be in there and also talking about a new representative. Meet Chicago Northwest will be in there, and also talking about a new representative discussion. Business Advocate Up Eight, the City Savers discussion will continue, and that will be something that the city council will see in a little bit, too. City events for 2020, continued goal discussion for 2020, 2021, and then items of interest in the chamber update. Obviously, at 7:30, the Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, September 1st. Intensively, they have one item for special use for video gaming cafe with variance for screening and refuse containers at 2164 Plum Grove Road. It's in our C2 General Commercial Services District, Charity Jones of Laredo Hospitality is the petitioner. The item that I do want to add is in two parts, and that actually talks about, Cook County has put out secure drop boxes throughout the area, 50 different locations. There's obviously one in Arlington Heights and one in Palatine, but then also, Cook County will be utilizing the courthouses for five additional drop boxes, but those will not be out until October 9th, and the Rolling Meadows Courthouse is scheduled to have one of those drop boxes. But again, early voting does start in October, we'll have more of that, obviously, as we continue with some other updates. The other part of that, that I do want to mention, is that there was some concern about Palatine Village Hall, that has been one of the early voting locations in the past. It will not be at the Village Hall, but they did find a different location. And again, there's been another location, it's building south of the Metro Station, and there will be more information, obviously, with that that comes out, but the courthouse would still be early voting, the Palatine and some of the other pieces. But those are the two that we do want to reiterate, between the drop boxes, and that goes back to what the League of Women voters stated, that, again, it's time coming up for November elections, and that is items of interest at this point in time.
Thank you for sharing those community items of interest, Manager Crumstock. That leaves us with the July 2020 New Business Report, or New Businesses. Do you have information to share with us on that?
This one's really short, we just have three new businesses. We do welcome all of them. Out of the three businesses, one's really just a change in ownership, but again, we do appreciate all the new businesses, and we wish them well.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on from those items, we now have matters not on the agenda. Are there any matters not on the agenda? Start with Alderman O'Brien, then Alderman Cannon.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this might hopefully is a quick one, I hope it's for Chief Nowacki or City Attorney Mosse Wolf. With the recent information out of Springfield, where local municipalities can start enforcing the lack of mask wearing through owners and entities, not individuals, do we need to adopt anything different to give our officers and police departments the right to do enforcement? That was just a question I'd received prior to this meeting, coming back from the Park District Meeting. Is there anything that we need to adopt or to look in that gives your officers or Attorney Wolf, the police department, the authority on a complaint basis to go check out one of these and enforce those if needed?
Chief Nowacki, if you have a response, you can jump right in.
All right, thank you, Mayor, good evening. Regarding Alderman O'Brien's question, no, we would not need any new ordinance passed. The law's pretty clear on that. It actually starts out, though, with a warning process and so forth, so it's a pretty long involved procedure before there would actually be any fines, but we would not need to adopt any new ordinance.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks, Chief, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Alderman Cannon, then Alderman Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last month, we had a large discussion about all public works, and we were told we would get a timeline about when the project might move forward, and maybe an ending date. I haven't seen or heard anything since then, I'm not expecting to get an exact date today, but it would be very helpful to me to find out what our plan is going forward shortly. So, I was just wondering if we could get either Public Works or our manager, Mr. Crumstock, to get us a timeline on that soon, please, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Manager Crumstock, would that be you or Director Horn that'll work on that, so we know for
That would go back to Public Works Director Rob Horn, but we heard it about the timeline, so we will get you stuff.
Okay, thank you. Anything further, Alderman Cannon?
No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, then Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. Several residents stopped me while I was at Jewel, asking about when the city is going to have council meetings face-to-face in City Hall, because they pretty much said they liked to watch it on TV. So, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we begin council meetings in City Hall starting in September.
Okay. Attorney Wolf, now I just need to get some clarification here, because the mayor's the one that sets forth whether or not we hold meetings virtually or physically. What's the, what's the protocol on this request here from Alderman Diastis?
Yes, you are correct, Mayor. Under the statute, the Open Meetings Act, the head of the public body is the authority that determines whether or not an in-person meeting is not feasible at this time, so you retain the authority to make that determination as to whether the meetings should be held remotely and continue that way.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf, and Alderman Diastis, when I start seeing the numbers of COVID-19 in our community and neighboring communities, it go on the decline, or optimistically at least plateau, and not move in a more positive increases where they've been, where they are, then I'll consider bringing us back in person.
Well, I kind of disagree, since we have economic development and planning and zoning that, so that is your choice, but I disagree with that, and I'll let the residents know that's your choice.
That's fine, thank you. Alderman Beniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to touch base with staff and find out, I believe it was at a committee of the whole meeting, that we had taken a straw vote that old Firehouse Station 16 on Plum Grove Road, we would hold off on putting that property up for sale, and I just drove by it two days ago, and there's a for sale sign in front of the property, so I'm a little
So, I can actually answer that, Mayor. Obviously, there is a sign on it, it's, we've been very clear with callers that it's not for sale at this point in time, but they're just seeing what the interest is, and that's why it went up at the same point in time when the other one went in. So, we've had more people, obviously, looking at the fire station and Meadow, but it just sits there, and we can pull that off if want, but it was also interesting to see if anybody would even walk through it, and if there was any interest at that point for the other
Alderman Beniziano, anything further in regards to Manager Crumstock's response?
Sorry, I was hitting mute, and it kept unmuting and muting. So, I guess, I understand that, but I guess I'm a little confused then why we had a straw vote, as to why we wouldn't put it up for sale, and then staff went ahead and kind of did the opposite, so I guess that still has me a bit confused, but I guess thanks for the explanation, that's all.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Alderman Bud Matts, your hand is up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this week is a result of being informed, is a recent appellate court decision regarding Freedom of Information Act requests. It seems that we, as council people, would be subject to a greater level of scrutiny and of our personal phones, texts, emails, et cetera. As a result, I think it's appropriate at this time for the city to consider furnish adequate means of communication to the aldermen. If the city were to provide the aldermen with smartphones capable of texting, phone calls, and sending and receiving emails off the city's web server, the barrier between personal and public communication for aldermen would readily established, and then those phones could travel, could travel from alderman to alderman, as there were changes as a result of elections, or as aldermen roll off, but continuity would be the same, that people in our ward would be able to always dial the same number for their alderman, regardless of who is their alderman, and as phones, as people's home phones become less and less common, this would provide them with a way of always being able to get in touch with their aldermen. So, I'd like to request the city look into this, and then, based on emails that I read today, it looks like that could be a subject of discussion, potentially, at the upcoming council of the whole meeting next month, but if it isn't, then I would like to see it as an agenda item on the upcoming meeting, to approve those expenses to do this for the aldermen, so that we can have an established and defined line between our personal, our private communication. Thank you for your time.
And thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. As you know and are aware, we are going to be having a committee of the whole meeting regarding that subject, and with that, there will be discussion about devices for communication, and a greater bifurcation between our individual and our voluntary roles here with the city, and so those devices will be a subject within that topic. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I was just following up on that, and I know we're going to talk about in September, based on the emails. I would just also ask Attorney Wolf, with her expertise in looking into this, the way that I understood it, and just talk with some other people in the legal field, the way that it's understood is that it could still be affordable for our personal phones, that it could, even if city does issue and takes on the cost of, and I'm guessing here, I don't know what the cost would be, $50 per cellphone per elected official, so potentially $400 to $600 a month, something along those lines, but even with that additional cost, it still could trace back to personable items, based on the requestor, as well as affidavits and things, so just if we could look into that as well for future discussions, that if that wanted exempt staff or council members from, as requirements from a personal device, I'm open for personal devices, I mean, during a professional life as well, so I'm not worried about that personally, so I don't know that I would be able in favor of this going forward, that we can continue to use our devices and just use them for what they meant to be for, government, business on, government email addresses and personal on personal, but that's just from my outside perspective, looking at some of the legal stuff that was passed, is that it still could leave people, it would not exempt us fully, if, even if the city was to incur the cost to give each alderman a cellphone. Attorney Wolf, I don't think we need an answer now, Mr. Mayor, I'll look for that, too, but that's just something I'd like to be investigating, too, prior to us making this decision.
Oh, thank you for that. I imagine it's going to be a very comprehensive conversation at that time, this is a pretty significant topic for all of us who volunteer our time here, to be put under such unnecessary microscopes, potentially, so, yeah, just keep those questions coming for the time of that committee of the whole, so we can have a
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
...articulate conversation. Thank you. Any further matters not on this evening's agenda? Okay, if there aren't any other items, then you notice there is an opportunity for closed session, there's two items, both containing personnel matters, Personnel 5 ILCS 120/2C1 of the Illinois Opens Meeting Act, and this request does require a roll call vote, and in order for that, I would need a motion to go into closed session. Do I have that motion in a second? Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, and thank you for the second, Alderman Bessassi. Is there any discussion, I'm going into closed session this evening? Alderman Bessassi, if you do have discussion?
Trying to lower my hand, hold on.
Otherwise, I'll wait for you to lower it.
There we go.
All right, thank you. Seeing no discussion on this item, then the next step is for the clerk to call roll.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoyka?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
With seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press, they are advised that we do not anticipate taking any further action upon returning to open session, so with that, have a wonderful evening and a safe holiday weekend as you go into it, and council, I'll see you on the closed session line shortly.